Please rise for the flag. Oh, silence. While you rise.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you didn't get a chance to already, please silence yourselves both. We have two proclamations on our agenda this evening. The first is Women's Voters Month, and Councilmember Julie Mayfield will present this proclamation. And all those that are here on that proclamation, please step forward. Ladies, I have in particular that Kate Carson and Ruth O'Donnell are here. And, yes. Okay. All right, yes, it is on. Okay, so I am going to read this proclamation in honor of Women's Voters Month, but I want to say a couple things. First of all, you may know that we're in an election year, and I'm just going to say that this is the most important election of our lifetimes yet again, so please, everybody, vote. And this is also just a good time to remind us of a very special place in North Carolina's history that Asheville has in Buncombe County, and that is that this county, even before women could vote in 1920, elected to the North Carolina legislature the very first woman, and actually, the very first woman elected to a legislature in the southeast, Lillian Exum Clement, who was an attorney here in town. And that's just a great piece of history that a lot of people don't know. So here we go, in honor of women and voting. Whereas this year, we celebrate the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States and the founding of the League of Women Voters. And whereas the League of Women Voters is an organized movement to enfranchise women begun in July 1848, and whereas the League of Women Voters of North Carolina was launched on October 7, 1920, on the steps of the Guilford County Courthouse by Bertrude Whale, a politically active and tireless young woman from Goldsboro, North Carolina; and whereas, through the efforts of brave and courageous women referred to as suffragists, who sacrificed family, their personal life, and their financial resources for over 70 years to gain equal rights for women, especially the right to vote; and whereas women and men, black and white, supported the women's suffrage movement for women to gain the constitutional right of having a voice in making the laws that govern them; and whereas the women's suffrage movement led to the passage of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States in 1919, with ratification by the states in the summer of 1920; and whereas more than 120,000 women were registered to vote in North Carolina by 1920; and whereas women today are running for office in higher numbers and more active in the election process than ever before in history. Now, therefore, I, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim February 2020 as Women Voters Month in the City of Asheville, and encourage the community to recognize the efforts of the League of Women Voters of North Carolina and the brave women of the past and present to enfranchise women.
Thank you very much. We are, as League members, extremely proud of our history, and we continue to work in your city and in our county towards equality for women, although I will say that we are a co-ed organization. So any gentlemen here are invited to join. Thank you again so much.
The proclamation this evening is Trauma Intervention Program Day, and Denise Gonzalez is here, and Denise, if you're here and you have anyone else with you, please feel free to go forward.
I'm going to introduce and give a proclamation for the Trauma Intervention Program. I just want to say that this group of people, the work they do, I learned about this group from Andrew Selwyn, who's part of it, and had no idea about what you all did and the volunteer time you put in, and just the emotional toll it must have taken on you all in terms of the work you do. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and you all can tell everybody the work you actually do, because I think it's important for our community to know. So whereas the Trauma Intervention Program of Western North Carolina provides emotional and practical support to citizens in crisis; and whereas the Trauma Intervention Program, or TIP, is launching new volunteer recruitment, aims at increasing the number of crisis-team volunteers in Western North Carolina; and whereas TIP supports individuals and families when a traumatic event occurs; and whereas TIP's citizen volunteers provide emotional first aid to survivors of tragedy in order to ease their immediate suffering, facilitate their healing, and long-term recovery; and whereas TIP supports emergency responders by helping to reduce the emotional burden often felt by emergency responders and allowing them to leave the scene once their job is complete; and whereas TIP supports the community in reducing the impact of trauma and creating an environment of community support in times of crises. Now, therefore, I, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim February 14, 2020, as Trauma Intervention Program Day in the City of Asheville, and encourage all citizens to support the Trauma Intervention Program of Western North Carolina.
Hi. The Trauma Intervention Program, we respond through the 911 system to be there whenever there's a traumatic event. Oftentimes, it's a suicide, a natural death, an auto accident, a fire, a flood, and we're there to provide support emotionally and to help people figure out the next steps. As you can imagine, that can be a very difficult situation. So we have some of our amazing volunteers here today who respond 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, throughout the city of Asheville, Buncombe County, and the city of Hendersonville. And they're there to support families at all hours of the day, as well as our first responders. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you to all those who came down tonight for our proclamations. We are going to move on to the consent agenda, but before we do that, a couple of housekeeping items. At the last meeting, we had a sort of off-the-cuff conversation about transit and transit funding and putting specifically the issue of extended hour transit services on the agenda for this evening. And after sort of regrouping, we're going to put transit on the council retreat agenda, which is already scheduled to be on that agenda, but that will take place on March 13, pretty much all day long, on March 13, at Harrah's Cherokee Center, Asheville, AKA the Civic Center. And we'll take up that item, as well as other items, kind of looking more broadly at transit in general in the budget for the year to come. That is an opportunity for the council to give direction to the manager regarding what we'd like to see in the manager's budget for the next year, that we ultimately vote on earlier in June. So that is why it is not on the agenda for this evening. Also, we have a newish program where we're asking people to let us know who they are when they come speak, which you already do, but also let us know where you live, so we have an idea of where you're coming from when you come speak to us. So we did that last meeting, went really well, everyone participated, so thank you. We have, next up, a consent agenda, and Councilman Haynes has requested that we consider item K separately. So we will do that. So let me first ask if there is a motion or questions regarding the consent agenda except item K.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, everything except item K.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the motion to approve the consent agenda except item K, which is the resolution urging congressional passage of H.R. 763?
And to be clear, we will be talking about that in a minute.
We'll do that in a minute. Okay, all those, oh, we have a clarification.
Relative to consent item E, I just wanted to clarify, the description says that it will enable the city of Asheville to regulate and administer parking at the Asheville Regional Airport. What we're really authorizing here is the processing of citations, that the city of Asheville won't be issuing the citations. All the city will be doing is actually processing the citations and collecting them. The description is rather broad, and on the way in, I listened as the NPR station said that we were going to run the parking for the airport, and I just wanted to clarify that that's not what we are doing.
We will need the PR proceedance.
We will just be collecting the money, but we are not running the parking for the airport.
Just to clarify. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we have item K, so first, we'll need a motion on item K, and then we will take time.
I move we approve item K of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I know, Brian, do you want to say something now, or do you want to?
I would like to say something now, yes. Okay. So I cannot support the House bill, H.R. 763, which we are being asked to endorse here today. Speaking to Sacy in October, a representative of the Citizens Climate Lobby described the bill as a meatless bone. While it's true that it would do little to address the climate emergency we are facing, the flaws run much deeper than that. This bill precludes the EPA from regulating CO2 emissions covered by the bill for a period of 10 years. Whether the bill's targets are being met will be assessed until the year 2030, the same year that the last year's IPCC report says we need to have drastically reduced CO2 emissions. Brett Hartle of the Center for Biological Diversity stated, "We don't have a decade to cross our fingers and hope that a huge giveaway to fossil fuel companies gets us out of this climate crisis." It also exempts the U.S. military, which is the largest institutional consumer of petroleum in the world. According to Open Secrets website, 48 of the bill's cosponsors have taken money from the oil and gas industry and the electric utilities industry. We can no longer allow the fossil fuel and utilities industries to help write legislation ensuring their own self-preservation while their actions continue to move the planet towards irreversible catastrophic changes to the environment. At our previous meeting, the council unanimously passed a climate emergency resolution calling for bold actions to combat the climate crisis. H.R. 763 fails to meet that challenge. I cannot support this endorsement.
Is there anyone on council wishing to speak on this motion before I open it up? If there's anyone who would like to speak on the motion to approve item K? Yes, sir. And again, you'll have three minutes. Watch the lights on the lectern. Green means go, orange means you're getting close to stop, red in the buzzer means stop. Please state your name, and then let us know whether you live in the city, where you live in, rather.
My name is Charles Warner, and I live in the city of Sebastian. I oppose this bill. It is, quite frankly, a carbon tax. Now, that sounds great, but keep in mind that a carbon tax imposed on utilities and other people, they do not pay it. They simply pass it right along. It'll come down to you, it'll come down to me, it'll come down to the agent, it'll come down to the poor, it'll come down to those who are on fixed incomes, and it will not make much difference because, according to a report I read, as of 2017, China has now surpassed both the U.S. and Europe combined in their CO2 emissions. India is not far behind, and the rest of Southeast Asia is rapidly increasing. So we will be wasting our time and money approving that bill. If we want to approve anything, let's ask for more money for development of CO2 sequestration. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Steffi Rausch, and I'm here to support the passing of this bill, resolution, because it will help the city reach its goal, set forth in the climate emergency and other resolutions that they've passed. It's also mentioned in the climate emergency resolution as one of many options. However, this particular carbon pricing legislation truly is the best first step to reduce our emissions at the scale and speed that is necessary without spending any government money. It will also protect low-income and middle-income citizens, obtain the support of both political parties, and is gaining momentum worldwide. In fact, carbon fee and dividend was passed in Canada and implemented this year due to CCL's efforts. And now, we're seeing many other countries talking about the Canada Carbon Dividends Plan, which is a progressive plan versus a regressive carbon tax, because it gives the money right back to people. So it will offset that rising cost. Carbon pricing is fast becoming known around the world as a much better alternative to regulations, because it does more than just force producers to change their ways. It gives predictability to the markets, so that banks and investors can invest in low-carbon markets faster, innovators can innovate faster, seeing that they could make money, and producers can funnel their money towards the transition faster without getting tied up in regulatory burdens, so they can funnel their money that way. As a result, carbon pricing initiatives worldwide have doubled in the past year from 25 to 58, which means a quarter of global emissions are now covered by a price on carbon already. And 80% of U.S. imports come from carbon pricing countries here in the U.S. This is a reason the Enroad's Climate Change Solution Simulator that was created by MIT and Climate Interactive in Asheville shows carbon pricing as one of the strongest solutions to help meet our emission reduction goals in time. So for anyone concerned that carbon pricing will not reduce our emissions significantly enough, I ask that you reconsider why carbon pricing is gaining momentum around the world, and do you want bipartisan support to get this done and remain sustainable? Another benefit of this legislation is that it stipulates, in the legislation, that if for any reason the greenhouse gas emission goals contained in the bill are not achieved within 10 years, Congress mandates that the EPA must then regulate emissions to achieve these goals. And congressionally mandated regulations are necessary to pull regulatory actions like the Clean Power Plan out of the courts, as they are now. And this bill does just that, so it gives more power to the EPA at that point. I think we can all agree that we need federal climate legislation to meet our goals, but if every organization, environmental organization chooses to support only in a path they consider perfect, we are guaranteed to accomplish nothing.
Are you a city resident?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Don Kraus, I'm from North Asheville. I'm a volunteer organizer and the Tennessee State Coordinator with Citizens Climate Lobby. I'm here to speak in favor of passage of the council's resolution supporting H.R. 763, the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. I congratulate the council on recent passage of its climate emergency resolution. Endorsement of the congressional passage of the Energy Innovation Carbon Dividend Act is an excellent next step. As you know, in 2018, the council endorsed the underlying principle behind this bill, namely, carbon fee and dividend, and it's not alone. Last year, close to 3,600 ideologically, politically, and academically diverse economists signed the Economist Statement on Carbon Dividends. Its signatories include four former chairs of the Federal Reserve, all of them, 27 Nobel laureates, 15 former chairs of the Council of Economic Advisers. Here in Asheville, over 100 businesses, prominent individuals, and organizations have specifically endorsed H.R. 763, including 17 breweries, 15 green builders, 10 realtors, as has the Asheville Transit Committee, the Asheville Multimodal Transportation Commission, and the Western Carolina Medical Society. This legislation is effective. It's good for people, and will reduce U.S. greenhouse gas emissions by 40% by 2030 and 90% by 2050. Within 10 years, the monthly dividend of a family of four is $368 per month. Because of better air quality, the legislation will save 295,000 lives through 2030. The bill will create 2.1 million new jobs. This revenue-neutral legislation is the first best step our nation can take towards addressing climate crisis without doing it on the backs of our most vulnerable people. Although they've yet to join the 78 cosponsors currently of the legislation, Representatives Henry and Meadows have spoken positively about the bill, unanimous endorsement by the city council could help to increase support for this legislation. Asheville cannot solve the climate crisis alone, but national legislation will move the needle. All you know that members of Congress do not create political will, they respond to it. The council's passage of this resolution will be one more step towards federal adoption of this important bill. We must put a price on pollution. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Julie Groh, and I live in North Asheville. And I'm simply here to say that I'm in favor for the council voting yes on H.R. 763, the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. I think this resolution is a really smart step in addressing climate change, which is something that we need to do right away. And it puts a price on carbon, but it also supports lower and middle-income families. So it kind of is a very smart way of taking a step to address climate change, which we need to do today.
I have some remarks, but I'm going to wing it here. First of all, fundamentally, Dan Glenn, North Asheville, volunteer with Citizens Climate Fundamentally, what Citizens Climate Lobby is trying to do is to pass bipartisan legislation at the national level. We want to pass something that's durable, that hopefully with slight changes in Congress that won't get overturned, like all the regulations that have been overturned by the current administration. So there are compromises that need to be made. As you mentioned, the regulatory pause, that was a compromise to get bipartisan cosponsorship of the bill. Initially, there were three Republicans and three Democrats that introduced this bill. The comment that you mentioned about it being a meatless bone was specific to the regulatory pause. It was given to elicit cosponsorship by Republicans, so we could have a bipartisan bill. Right now, there is no regulation that is related to carbon emissions. EPA has no authorization from Congress to do that. The only authorization they have came from ruling by a court that was ultimately overturned by the Supreme Court. So this bill would actually give the EPA specific authorization to regulate emissions, which they have never had. So I encourage you all to support this bill. It's the biggest first step we can take. We know it won't solve climate change. There are lots of other things that need to be passed, lots of things in the Green New Deal that are necessary, but this would be the biggest first step. Thank you.
I didn't say I'm quick, and I live in South Asheville, and I just want to thank you all for giving me this minute, but I support this H.R. 763 bill, the Innovation Act, carbon dividend, because I feel like it only can enhance people of color and other people as low-middle class, because the dividend can be used to help those people that can't afford healthcare or maybe have a chance to go to the doctor, this will give them the incentive to go see a doctor. And not only does this don't help us today, but think about our children and our grandchildren down the road, where this can be of benefit for them. So I just feel like you guys will enhance and support this bill. It would be a great step for our young people and our kids and our grandchildren in the future. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? Yes.
Hi, my name is John Wegman, and I'm with North Asheville, and I'm also one of the owners of Eastport, which is a small dinner room manufacturing company based here in Asheville. We employ about 70 people here in town, and we just recently endorsed H.R. 763. Prior to endorsing, we actually made the decision to impose our own internal carbon tax on our emissions. From my perspective, as husband said, it's one of the best first steps we can take to actually taking action and using the market. It's a way to work towards a solution to this problem. So I just want to voice my support.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this?
I'm with the Sunrise Movement, and I live in North Asheville. I did not plan on speaking right now, but I felt like I had to get up and urge you to not endorse this resolution. I think that Brian put it very well. It is too little, too late, and it will not get us to where we need to go fast enough. It would reduce our emissions on a 2050 timeline rather than a 2030 timeline, and it's not transformational change, like the Green New Deal is. We know that we need to transform our entire society to survive climate change, and just regulating CO2 without a comprehensive plan for transit, for housing, for sustainable agriculture is not going to get us to where we need to go. Additionally, everybody keeps talking about how this is so great because it has bipartisan support, but we should not be championing being signed off by Mark Meadows. We shouldn't be championing these leaders, so-called leaders, who have been bought off by fossil fuel executives, who have been bought off by corporations, and who don't care what's happening to the people. A plan that's championed by them is not good enough, and we know that it's a death sentence because they wouldn't sign out to anything else. So I just really want to say, this is not good enough. You all unanimously passed a climate emergency resolution and committed to looking at this problem from a transformational point of view, and looking at other parts of our society that we can start changing right now, like funding transit, and this will not get us there. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this motion? Okay, if not, council questions, comments, anything? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Thank you all. That concludes the consent agenda. We have two presentations and reports this evening. The first is going to be presented by, I'm going to say Barbara, oh, there you are, okay. The Neighborhood Advisory Committee update.
Thank you very much. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, our new city manager, and I am very privileged to be Chair of the Neighborhood Advisory Committee. As you know, I have been an activist for neighborhoods for many, many years, and I would like to take just a moment to have some members of the committee stand up, if they would, please. They came to support me. Or keep me straight, I don't know which one. I want to thank Brenda Mills, our staff liaison, who is very dedicated to keeping us focused and has been just immeasurably helpful, and I don't know what we would do without her, and to V. J. Kapoor, who helped our committee very much. committee very much. And I will tell you that the nine members of this committee are committed to neighborhoods. We are committed to volunteering to help city council and other departments of this city so that the neighborhoods have a voice and we can all work together for a better community. And that's all any of us can ask for in this day and time since we're growing so rapidly. We have had, the Sounding Board for Neighborhood Issues is where this committee comes in. And when something is brought to us, we bring it to council. We've had two issues forum, and currently we are planning for a Festival of Neighborhoods. The first forum that we had, we decided that some of the forums we had in the past, such as regional meetings, were not having the turnout that we needed. So we figured that if we had something that the community felt like was a real concern, we would get more folks to turn out, and we did so. As is, it'll be no surprise to city council, traffic was one of those issues, and that was in June, and the noise ordinance that is being written and that we wanted input on from everyone we could talk with was held in August. The traffic issues that were brought before us, that is something that really is no surprise either. Traffic calming, congestion, enforcement, traffic safety, pedestrian safety, and the I-26-related issues. We had the city staff and transportation, police, and planning, along with the North Carolina DOT Local Division 13 review these issues that came forth out of this forum. Comparisons were made on the issues that are already in line for review, or how the remaining traffic matters will be addressed. For example, some will be part of the I-26 project, and some will be part of the Tunnel Road Quarter Study. Follow-up has been made with all the attendees, and the issues addressed and next steps. Noise. This issue forum was provided by the Development Services Department on results of the survey and meetings with groups and residents. All information regarding the local noise ordinance revision can be found at this website. We have begun to invite neighborhoods to present at our regular monthly meetings, and we are finding that more and more neighborhoods are forming associations. They feel they're being asked to accept a lot of things they would rather have some input on, and the way to do that is have an association and bring their concerns to the proper departments or to the council. We have today heard from Shiloh, Burton Street, West End, Klingman, Haw Creek, the heart of Chestnut Hills, the Asheville Housing Authority, Hillside Terrace, which is a new registered neighborhood. And we continue to do that through 2020. What have we heard? Housing cost, gentrification, housing supply, traffic, parking, crime, break-ins, safety complaints, loss of community involvement, and diminishing civic participation. And what that means is that the City of Asheville is blessed that we have a community that wants to give input to their council representatives, that they want to give input to the planning department, they want to give input and be involved. And I cannot imagine the amount of volunteer hours that the community folks turn in to their husbands or their wives monthly for the time spent working for this community. And we want to continue that. Everyone wants to work together, if at all possible. Homeless issues and access to mental health services and job skills training also came We have observed that people care about neighborhoods in the community. They want to help their neighbors. If I don't have a problem, that doesn't mean I won't have it down the road sometime, and it's a network. And people will work with city planners and police if given the opportunity, and what people get out of the neighborhood is just like any other community. It's in part what they put in it. We are going to brag on two more plans on the page, and also the registered neighborhoods, Oakley and Hillside Terrace, and there are more to come, I'm sure. We're planning a Festival of Neighborhoods, a fun festival, to network with neighborhoods in the city, and this is in the planning stages. And we certainly hope that if you all want to stop by, we might even have a coke or something for you. We're also offering to, with the Neighborhood Award for Heroes, because there is a lot of heroes in this community. And we hope that this year, we again will have many, many applications for this wonderful award for people who just do extraordinary work on behalf of the community. We have heard or we have learned on home stays, revenue diversification, infield, development notification tube, open space, tree save, noise ordinance, urban centers, the budget process, and advancing racial equity 101 training. With that, I thank you. Is there any questions? And I really appreciate it. Y'all have a hard job, and I don't envy any of you, but if you do something I don't like, you'll hear from me.
Barbara, don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. Barbara, I had a question for the committee. I seem to remember a couple of years ago, right after I got on council, that the Neighborhood Advisory Committee was exploring ways to try to increase the capacity of neighborhood leaders to, you know, run good meetings and engage constructively with city staff. Is that, I mean, I know, is that effort, has that gone in?
Effort is ongoing, Julie. We definitely, not only with NAC, but with outside, for example, Coalition of Asheville Neighborhoods, we work together on some things because we're all out for the same thing, to make a better community. And definitely to teach folks how to do their homework, run a meeting, is on the top of our list and something that, yes, ma'am, we will continue that effort. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second report this evening is the manager's report. Let us begin.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, City Council, everyone who's in attendance and our listening audience, viewing audience. We have been trying to provide an update on council's strategic initiatives and priorities since late December, early January. And tonight, we are going to have Kimberly Archie give an update on your strategic initiatives around equity. Over the past two months, we have covered, I believe, transit and public services and facilities. And as I said, Kimberly's going to come and present on equity and inclusion tonight. So Kimberly, it's on you.
Good evening, council. Mayor, let me apologize in advance. I'm going to state my name, but before I do that, I'm going to apologize in advance. I have a chronic cough, and it just kind of comes up when it wants to. So I was, I had a mint in my mouth, that's gone, but I have some water just in case I have an attack. So please forgive me. I'm Kimberly Archie, the Director of the Office of Equity and Inclusion, and I'd like to provide a report for the office and what the city's been doing. My plan tonight is to revisit the council's priorities specific to equity and inclusion, revisit the vision and mission, share where we've been, where we are now, and share where So the, two of the top 13 council priorities of fiscal year 2020 is, are these two particular strategies, or, yeah, strategies. The first one has to do with working with Asheville City Schools to eliminate disparities in access to quality schools and other educational resources, as well as working with, within our city processes to implement strategies that were in the National Legal Cities Report to foster economic mobility. I think that was like a 2017 report. Additionally, I'll give an update on four other strategies. These are not the top 13 for this year, but they are part of council's overall strategies, and these are ongoing strategies regarding equity and hiring practices and policies, expanding diversity on boards and commissions, reviewing our programming facilities and staff operations with an emphasis on parks and recreation, and also working with others in community to honor the history and the contributions of African-Americans in Asheville's So just as a reminder, this was the 2036 vision that council put together in 2016, and it speaks of Asheville being an inclusive and diverse city. We have created an equitable community where everyone can participate and has the opportunity to fulfill their potential because they have access to affordable, healthy food, transportation, quality education, and living wage jobs. Asheville promotes and supports minority businesses as a means of strengthening our local economy, and we use a racial equity lens. Embedding racial equity, or embedding equity and leading with racial equity has been the work of the Office of Equity and Inclusion as well as staff for a couple of years now. And we still have a working mission in the office, which is to foster a fair and inclusive culture across city government that promotes equitable policies, practices, and procedures, and facilitates improved human relations. So where have we been since those, that working mission and those vision statements were created? We've been working through this racial equity framework, which is a reminder, is around normalizing, organizing, operationalizing, and visualizing racial equity in city government. How have we been doing that? We'll go through the framework, and I'll give you some examples of how we've been doing that. In the area of normalize, we've been training staff and added board and commissions to the trainings. It was just talked about in the last report that there are a number of folks that have attended Equity 101 training. We've actually had approximately 250 staff and 65 board and commission members have attended Equity 101 and Equity 201 training since we began about a year ago. Also part of normalizing is the idea of getting more comfortable talking about race and institutional and structural racism. The way we're doing that, or how we're accomplishing that, is through other learning opportunities and dialogue opportunities. So we have videos, documentaries that we watch or have viewings. We have folks listen to podcasts, and then we have discussions afterwards so that folks, again, get more comfortable talking about race and racism, because that is one of the main reasons why we don't see a lot of progress, is because we don't like talking about race and racism in this country. When we think about organizing, this is much bigger than the four staff that we have in the Office of Equity and Inclusion. This is a Herculean effort to embed this work not only within city government, but in city government, but with our partners as well. So I've divided this into some of the work that we've done internally and our external organizing. We have what are called Equity Core Teams, which are representatives from different departments, and they help to design or develop different tools that we can use in the city. Our first Equity Core Team helped to develop and design our Equity Action Plan, which you approved in 2018. And they have also, most recently, the Equity Core Team put together our Budget Analysis Tool, which is being, has been adapted and is being used for the fiscal year 21 budget process. In addition, we organize through interdepartmental action teams. These are also representatives, but more subject matter experts and folks that are working on the ground from different departments on particular areas of the Equity Action Plan. So for instance, we have a Workforce Equity Action, interdepartmental action team that works to move the needle and deepen the work that stated, the strategies that are stated in our Equity Action Plan. An example could be how we are looking at, through HR and through the HR process, we're looking at how to be more inclusive and equitable in our hiring and retaining people of color in our, in our city as staff, as employees. So things that we've done, for instance, could be looking at the true nature of the expectations and experience that we're requiring folks to have, is a license really required for every job in the city? Maybe not. Is a four-year degree required for every job in the city? Probably not. So being able to look through and analyze each of our positions that we're posting and making sure that we're actually, we're requiring what is necessary to do the job is one way that we have been working with HR through the interdepartmental action team to embed equity in the process. In addition to that, we've got a workforce, sorry, an inclusive community engagement work group, as well as a contracting and procurement interdepartmental action team. Just to touch on some of the external organizing and influencing that we've done, we are supporting boards and commissions, they're attending our trainings. We also are involved with Buncombe County. We meet with the county manager's office around the equity work that they're interested in doing, they're learning from our process and our journey. We also are part of their Safety and Justice Challenge. And of course, we're a member of the Western North Carolina Diversity Engagement Coalition. We've sat down, we've presented to United Way, and we have a strong relationship with UC Asheville as they are moving forward with their diversity and inclusion work. And then, as you all know, we're part of the Equity Collaborative with the Asheville City Schools. So it's not just, again, not just the four of us in Equity and Inclusion, although we're very glad to have an office with staff, it takes all of us to embed equity and move it forward. Tools, we've talked about some of the tools that we've embedded or that we've used equity to create. Again, the fiscal year 21 budget process has equity embedded in the process. The property, city property disposition policy that you adopted, we worked with them on developing that policy, as well as we've been very involved with the noise ordinance update and using the racial equity analysis tool to go deeper with urban centers, the rezoning for urban centers. Those, these tools really help people go deeper and ask deeper questions as we're making decisions, as we're making policy recommendations. Where are we now on your strategies, council's top 13 strategies? These specific two, we're part of the Equity Collaborative, moving the needle on discussing equity and how each of us in the community has a role in closing the achievement gap, which is really an opportunity gap, as well as we have staff cited as an equity resource in at least one school on a regular basis. That second strategy, A6, we are working to position the city as a model employer, which was one of the suggestions in the NLC report to foster economic mobility. And I can go deeper into that, but it's really around the hiring and retention of people of color and having equitable practices and policies for HR, which I touched on already a little bit. a little bit. The other council strategies that I want to touch on quickly, on where we are now, we are, um, working with HR and through the interdepartmental action team to improve our data collection so that we can get a, a good understanding of who are our employees, what's the demographics of our population of folks that work as employees for the city, how we're tracking that, and, uh, be able to track progress as we move forward. And we're also piloting different practice changes, such as the going deeper and analyzing , uh, job descriptions. Council Strategy A two, we've been working with the Assistant City Clerk and, um, the interdepartmental action team that's focused on inclusive community engagement. They've come up with a new application for, uh, council, for, I'm sorry, for boards and commissions, and we currently have an inclusion survey out there to understand this kind of the climate of all of our boards and commissions if they feel that, um, we're doing a good job of including, um, our community in our decisions. Council Strategy A three was really about, uh, had an emphasis on parks and recreation, and we're working to develop an action team within the Department of Parks and Recreation to track their performance on their particular, um, de- uh, departmental act-, um, action plan around equity. And, um, the other departments are, we're, we are so, we are also looking at how to, um, make sure that our programming and our operations and our facilities, we're reviewing the equity or how equitable we're being, um, across the city. That's something we're looking forward to doing in the near future. Voice is about to go. Um, Strategy A four, we're supporting the African American Heritage Commission on their monument process, as well as increase, help to increase communication and coordination with both of the, um, commissions that we support, the African American Heritage Commission as well as the Human Relations Commission. Lastly, what we're doing right now, and that's key, we have a results-based accountability training that's happening on February twentieth, which is the opportunity for us to go deeper in how we decide, um, what we're going, what, what direction we're going as a city, not just in equity, but all across the city, so that we can answer the questions of how much did we do, how well did we do it, and is anyone really better off? And then we've, um, embedded racial equity in our decision-making and policy recommendations by making sure that we have, um, additional analysis. Again, data collection improvements, it's important to have da- good data before we make decisions, the board and commissions', um, involvement that we have, as well as the inclusive community engagement work that we're, that I've already talked about. Lastly, I'm gonna just talk about where we're going. So to get to that visualize part of the framework, we really need to listen and be responsive and accountable to the community's vision for racial equity in Asheville, especially the, those that are most impacted by the equities and the disparities that we see. Some ways that we're addressing that to get to, uh, the voices of those most impacted are through our racial healing mini-grants, which you know a little bit about. We've deepened, um, our racial equity facilitators pipelines, and we're adding to the number of racial equity facilitators in the city. We also did that through a mini-grant, and then we're being responsive and inclusive with African American business development. We work in the Office of Equity and Inclusion, we work deeply with our business inclusion This is the last slide. We are, um, another way we're normalizing is we've scheduled Black History is American History Film Series this month, celebrating Black History Month, and we're having discussions after each one. We had our first one last night. You can see the other dates here, starting at six o'clock over at Rainbow, Rainbow Community School. And lastly, we are hosting the Economic Inclusion in Southern Cities Learning Cohort that we've been a part of for the last five years, um, here in Asheville. This is the first time that the seven, the six other cities will come here, and that's May second through fourth. So that's our report on equity and inclusion, especially as it relates to council's top priorities, and, uh, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those.
And Mayor, I'll just quickly add that, uh, Maggie is gonna ding the time for us. We, we went over a little bit, and we apologize for that, but, um, hopefully what you hear from the presentation is that equity and inclusion is of value. It is being, uh, played out through a number of initiatives that we have underway, but I just want to make sure that you don't feel as though this is a program. We are truly, truly trying not to have this be a program, but to have this be of value. And you can see it permeates all of our departments, it permeates everything we do, that we look at, um, all of our policies and operations through this lens. And, um, so with that, I will conclude my report.
I have a question. I just want to say, um, thank you and everybody else who does this work around the city. I know it can be very time-consuming, but also mentally draining at times, and so I appreciate everybody who puts forth this work. Thank you.
That concludes our presentations and reports for this evening. Um, we have three exciting public hearings, guys. They are all three closures, and Chad is going to present all three, but we'll do each one with its own public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you said, we do have three closings tonight. Um, I will start, as the agenda says, with, uh, Oak Street. A little background on this one, this is located in South Asheville off, uh, Peachtree Road, uh, which is near the Walmart area off of Hendersonville Road. This particular closure has been petitioned by Nettlewood LLC. They are actually the owner of all the adjoining parcels in that area. Uh, there are multiple parcels, but they are the owner of all of those. Uh, the purpose of this closure will be to facilitate the construction, uh, of a new surgical center in South Asheville, uh, and that will help consolidate, or this closure will help consolidate all of those parcels to allow for that. Uh, this was reviewed by staff, uh, no objections, uh, essentially no utility conflicts, and I say essentially because there is a existing, I think, two-inch water line that served the former houses that were in there. Uh, that water line is, the homes are no longer there, it is no longer needed in that. If it has not already been, it will be eliminated, that water line, so there will be no conflicts. Uh, Multimodal Commission supported this closure. Uh, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, uh, and then ultimately ask for the closure of this right-of-way.
Is it open, or is it just platted?
It's just platted. Uh, it did serve as a, uh, access to those homes that no longer exist.
So it was some kind of roadway?
It was a driveway, yes.
Kind of a driveway. Any other questions? Okay, I'll open the public hearing on the resolution to permanently close an unopened, oh, you said here, it's unopened, right of way known as Oak Street. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the closure of, of Oak Street? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution to permanently, excuse me, I move to adopt the resolution to permanently close an unopened right-of-way known as Oak Street.
Second. All right, I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The second is a resolution to permanently close an unopened right-of-way between Midway Drive and Willis Way.
Yes. A little context on this one, uh, this one is located in North Asheville, uh, west of Merriman, east of Kimberley Ave. Uh, it is actually located between Midway and the intersection of Ramoth and Willis Way.
You gotta change out your picture.
Oh, sorry. I'm not used to the new format. Okay. Uh, as I said, it's located, uh, at the intersection of Ramoth, Willis Way, over to Midway. The petitioners for this particular closing are Ted and Jessica Levin. Uh, they own both parcels that adjoin this, they own either side. This particular right-of-way, prior to them owning it, there was a deck that, from the house, that extended into the right-of-way. You can't quite see it because of the yellow shading, but there is a deck that's in there. Their intention is to recombine these parcels into one parcel, uh, since they are the owner of both sides. This was, again, reviewed by staff and Multimodal Commission, uh, no objections there. Uh, there are no utility conflicts with this one, and again, I would be happy to answer any questions about this closure.
Any questions? I know this property well, I'm surprised there's a right-of-way there.
Like a walker.
Right. Anyone wishing to comment, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on the closing of Midway Drive and Willis Way? Between Midway Drive and Willis Way. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to permanently close an unopened right-of-way between Midway Drive and Willis Way.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the last one is a right-of-way, uh, off of Federal Alley in the Central Business District. This particular right-of-way is odd in that there is a private property between Federal Alley and this particular right-of-way. But again, I'll get used to that a bit now that I have it. It's kind of an L shape in there. The, uh, new mixed-use, uh, development that is proposed for, uh, between Cox and Ashland would actually use this right-of-way, it would allow them to build a wider sidewalk and more street trees along Federal Alley to get at least closer to compliance with the zoning ordinances. Uh, so this will be for, for that development. Uh, the owner of this, of both properties that, but this, the small one inside the L shape and then the larger, both owners are Ashland properties, uh, so they petitioned on both parcels. This one was also supported by staff and Multimodal, uh, Commission, and be happy to answer any questions for this one.
Okay. I'll just note that alley spelled wrong.
It is spelled wrong.
You gotta do it all over.
Maybe next time. That was my attempt at a brief.
Ally, ally, federal ally. Uh, anyone wishing to comment on the, yes, ma'am? Please just state your name and where you live.
Uh, Ree Ladowski. I live in the not proper West Asheville side, on the other side of Patton Avenue on Lula Lester.
West West Asheville?
Yeah, West West Asheville, yeah. Um, I work in that building right there in the middle, uh, called Chemist Spirits. Uh, right next to us is Funkatorium, um, and then you have, of course, the dry cleaners next door. Now, I'm not saying anything against this closure, uh, because they're gonna grow on this property, they're gonna put their parking deck there, it's gonna build out to be a four hundred and fifty apartment unit, uh, along on the other side with a, other building of lots of businesses that they're applying in retail as well that's being added. Um, I'm one of the leadership, uh, members of the South Slope Neighborhood Association, and, uh, a huge, uh, you know, we have lots of little things that we're, we're dealing with, but a huge thing is parking for all the employees in the area. Uh, you can see some cars in there, not the ones that are in the, uh, main square, those are all towed cars that, uh, all disappeared. But on any given day, there's about twenty people parking there. Um, that has been gracious enough to be allowed to park there, um, for Funkatorium, Cultura, Chemist Spirits. Um, we're about to lose all those parking spots, and we're about to lose a lot more, um, when it comes to, A, those apartments coming in and people needing to find more parking on the streets, because you get one parking space in that parking deck per apartment, um, not when there's multiple people living there, um, including the apartment complex across the street from Chemist. Um, those people will also be utilizing that parking on the street. There are plans, um, coming down from the city to that two-hour parking that is not enforced on that street, thankfully, so we can park there all day, will be enforced with metered parking here in the future. So we will be losing our street parking, we'll be losing our, thank you for taking, you know, uh, pity on us parking, and, um, and other kind of arrangements that we've done. Uh, and that's with just more apartments and more retail and more things that are building up in our neighborhood. So I'm just commenting to implore you that any opportunities that you can take to support the employees of downtown that are bringing in that tourism, those breweries, those distilleries, those food restaurants, with all those employees that have to travel in, uh, when it's our busiest times, not being able to park, having to spend half their paychecks on parking, um, being able to, having to walk long distances with money in their pocket to get to their car, um, at midnight after they're done serving, all those wonderful tourists that bring in all those money. Uh, we need that support and to find solutions. Um, ideas like maybe busing systems for tourists where they can park out of town and bus into the cities where they're not having to pick up that parking all the time, um, a bus that can go around to West Asheville or any other fun places to visit here. So just imploring you to keep your minds open to those solutions, uh, as we grow and are needing to support the people that keep this city running, including yourselves, on a daily basis versus just those who are visiting in for the day. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to comment on the closure of this right-of-way, unopened Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to adopt the resolution to permanently close a portion of Federal Alley.
Second.
All right, we go motion, motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, is, I'm sorry, I didn't move fast enough. This is an unopened alley off of Federal Alley.
It is off.
But that's not what the motion was. It was to close a portion of Federal Alley, so what?
Did you read the motion?
Okay. So as long as.
Okay, it's just different on the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, then I see.
Forgot the label part, right? Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes our public hearings agenda. And I feel like we need to, on the parking, I just wonder if you could leave some information with, um, city managers, put you in contact with Ken or somebody to talk about parking options. It made me wonder if Buncombe County is leasing spaces in their new deck on Cox, which is over six hundred spaces, and I, and I wonder if the Tribute is willing to do any leasing arrangements of, they're building a thousand spaces and.
Maybe they offer that maybe small-time, like hours?
Yeah.
To improve that with the businesses that they rent to, that maybe they're willing to move those spaces, so it just hasn't been a guarantee yet.
Okay, okay. Um, moving, moving on to new business, I'm gonna turn it over to the Vice Mayor for boards and commission appointments.
Okay. So we have two seats available at Civic Center Commission, and the Boards and Commission, uh, Committee recommends the appointment of John Ellis and Mukanda. That's a motion?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye. Any opposed?
Okay. Uh, we are going to delay looking at the recommendations for Multimodal Transportation Commission until next month. The Recreation Board, uh, for Boards and Commissions Committee recommends the appointment of Elizabeth Lafitte.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And for the Urban Forestry Commission, the Boards and Commission Committee recommends the appointment of Perrin DeJean.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, again, we have an abundance of great candidates and really appreciate all the interest and keep those applications coming.
Okay. Um, all right, we have a few votes that are signed up to speak under public comment. I'll call all the ones who've signed up first, and then if anyone wants to speak after that has signed up, I'll call on you. This is an opportunity to provide public comment. Again, three minutes is allowed. Please state your name and where you live, um, watch the lights on the lectern, and this is an opportunity to speak on items that weren't already on the agenda. And the first person signed up to speak is Vicki Meath.
Hello, I'm Vicki Meath. I live in West Asheville. I am speaking on behalf of Just Economics, Our Better Buses Together, and, uh, the two hundred and eighty-nine Asheville residents that have signed our petition to, um, implement a, uh, budget amendment to, or to pass a budget amendment to implement evening service hours that were outlined in the first year of the Transit Master Plan in this fiscal year. Um, at the transit, or the. At the transit, or the Chair of the Transit Committee said at the last Transit meeting, she was one of the people that was on the platform when, that was helping to navigate the changes that happened in January, and one of the most common things that she heard was that people thought these hours were coming, and they weren't. And I've outlined many times why I think that we need these hours, and we expected that there would be a public discussion about evening service hours on this agenda. And I believe that we still could put a small amount of the budget surplus towards beginning evening service hours sometime at the end of this fiscal year. I don't believe anybody should have been blindsided by this request, because I've been making the same request on behalf of the same people in June, September, October, December, and twice in January. I'm also just kind of, just because I've been making that same request and I've heard that folks have been blindsided, I'm asking council to clarify the process for community input. I've been before council more times than I can count over the last 10 years, and frankly, I thought that evening service hours would have been the easiest thing for me to be advocating for, because it was doable, it has wide community support, and because you all outlined that as your number-one priority in 2019 at your council retreat. Instead, it has been the hardest. I want evening service hours for all the people in my community that need them, and I anticipate will be before you for many months of advocacy through the budget process as we start up for the budget process for fiscal year '21, to make sure that the evening service hours are in the budget for next year, as well as the Year Two changes that provide much-needed frequency to South Asheville. Thank you for your time.
Reese Burns. Sorry if I said your first name wrong.
Reese.
Reese, Reese.
Well, hi, I'm Reese Burns. I live in West Asheville. Thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to stand in support with Vicki and hope that you all can work on getting extended hours, but also make a plug for fare-free transit. Obviously, the most important reason to expand our transit system is for the people who depend on it to get to work, the grocery store, doctor's appointments, and all of their daily activities. However, even if we look more broadly, we can still see problems with not expanding these hours. You can look at this town on a Friday night when dozens of Uber and Lyft drivers will descend into the town to pick people up who've gone out to drink or get dinner. You can look at the traffic on the Patton Bridge at 9:00 or 5:00. We're just seeing a huge waste of vehicle miles traveled, and a lot of that is because people just don't think that the bus is convenient or reliable, but we can show them that it is. We can't wait for the ridership to increase before making these improvements, and in fact, I believe that it'll work the other way around. We saw this with the Free Fare trials when ridership increased by 50%. Personally, when my work offered to pay for my monthly pass, it empowered me to stop making excuses and try it out, and I am now a frequent bus rider. Relatively small things like those $20 a month can have a really big impact on people's lives. I firmly believe that if we extend hours and implement fare-free rides, more people will try it out. More people will be able to supplement their incomes with evening hours and later night shifts. More people will be able to keep the tips that they make if they're not having to pay to take an Uber home. And more people will be able to realize how important our transit system is and be willing to fight for it in the future. So whether it's this year or next year, hopefully this year, I'd really encourage you all to look at those changes and do whatever's any way possible. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next person to sign up to speak is, I think it says Ethan Cruz.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Cruz from Mars Hill, North Carolina, but I'm here on behalf of Leaf Bubble Arts and Leaf Downtown Event. For the past three years, we've had a wonderful partnership with the city, establishing Leaf Downtown. It's been an event that started as 15,000 people and has evolved and blossomed into 30,000 multi-ethnic, intergenerational families that come out and celebrate music garden culture for two days during the summer. This past year, there's been some confusion and challenges in trying to establish our date for the event. This was due in some part to being in an interim phase where our date that is usually well-established as the first weekend in August was now open for re-establishment and had to, we had to go ahead and convene and re-imply. Then the date was challenged with two different organizations, our original with shindig on the green, and then the date that we are now looking at, August 7th and 8th, has an event that is put together with the Downtown Association, Tiny Tikes, taking place on the Sunday. Our main challenge here that we want to ask for the city's support is that our event runs until 10:00 PM on Saturday night, and the desire is for us to completely remove all of our equipment, facilities, staging, production from the green by 7:30 in the morning the following day. This is something we evaluated very intensively within our organization to see if we can do this sustainably, and within our current means and fiscal structure, largely dependent upon concessions and sponsors, as this is a free downtown event, we have not found avenues of sustainably doing this, honoring the Tiny Tikes' date the next day. So it is our hope that the city can make a commitment to assist us in this process so that we can host this event, which has had a major impact on the city. Just to dive into that a little bit, it's not only 30,000 people, we're partners with 14 different nonprofit organizations that advocate on social welfare of the city. We have 80 staff dependent on this, we have an NEA grant for $15,000 to help support us, and we also have numerous sponsors, businesses, and this has become a marquee event where families are invited into town who frequent restaurants, visit the beautiful city of Asheville, and really take the time to see the very best of the culture that we establish. So we feel like at this time, we're gathering peacefully, celebrating culture, and showing people that we can come together as different races and different people in the heart and enjoy a good family weekend together, that this event is more important than ever, and so we would love your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chloe Moore.
I live in North Asheville, and I am a part member of Sunrise Movement, but tonight I stand in solidarity with Better Buses Together and with all of our neighbors who do not have the transportation time or resources to be here advocating for extended bus hours. Last time I was here, I was proud to see the city commit to bold change with the climate emergency resolution, and now it's time for the city to make good on commitments it's made in the past. It's time to extend evening bus hours and trial fare-free weekends. I have the privilege of having been able to drive here tonight, as I believe that all of city council has as well. And from this point of privilege, expanding bus hours may not seem urgent. While I would love to ride the bus more, it's not urgent for me. But it is urgent for our friends and neighbors who do not have that privilege. It's urgent if you feel uncomfortable walking home from work at night. It's urgent if you need to cross town to visit a sick family member. It's urgent if it means the difference between getting to work and not having a job. By pushing this topic back to a later date again, city council does not acknowledge this urgency. I hope that city council will have the empathy to step into someone else's walking shoes and consider this not from the point of view of years-long goals, but in terms of nights and cold, and the rain, and in the dark. So please extend evening bus hours for our climate, for our city, and for our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Lines.
Hello again. My name is Alex, I'm with Sunrise, and I live in North Asheville. I just want to echo what everybody has said tonight. We are here in support of Just Economics and Better Buses Together, and I do want to reemphasize that we're very happy y'all passed the climate emergency resolution, and yeah, I just want to really emphasize the connection. This is absolutely the first step towards acting on the climate emergency resolution. We have to make good on our commitments to funding transit. We're in year one of the Transit Master Plan, and we're already behind. We should already be funding evening hours. Year two includes extended service to South Asheville, and I want to get us there, but we need to begin by starting on the commitments we've already made. And if we really want to prepare for and mitigate the effects of the climate crisis as we all committed to, we need to prioritize this, we need to get people out of cars, we need to support our community and the people who work in the service industry that make up the backbone of this economy, and we need to make it easy and accessible for people in order to take the bus and get out of their cars to reduce our emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Mandler.
Hello, my name is Max Mandler. I live in North Asheville, and I'm a volunteer with the Sunrise Movement, and I'm also here tonight standing in solidarity with Vicki and Just Economics and Better Buses I find that the factor that determines if a job is worth having is if the boss is cool, right? A bad boss can turn even the best job into a terrible experience every day, whether they're micromanaging you or just rude. I'm thinking about this tonight because as I stand here in front of you, as public servants, I am your boss. All these people who came here tonight, all the people in Asheville who vote are your boss. Believe me, we want to be the cool boss. We don't want to micromanage you. But the bus plan was agreed to, and year one is coming to an end and nothing has happened yet. You said you would extend bus hours into, later into the night, and trial fare-free weekends, and still that hasn't happened. So now, we as your collective boss have to step in and say, what's going on? Why aren't you doing the job that you said you would do? So that's what I'm here to say tonight. I would love to see this on the agenda for the next city council meeting. Thanks for getting here.
Those are the folks that have signed up to speak. Is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak that would like to speak? Yes.
Hello, my name is Kim Roney, and I'm here in solidarity as a member of Better Buses Together, and I just want to lift up the work of former Transit Committee Member Sabrina Raven, who reminded me when the Transit Master Plan was going down that the first parts of year one, we're going to have broad public support, because evening service hours is something we all understand with 30% of our buses ending at or before 8:00. But she is coming to mind tonight that geographic equity is important too, and we can't forget our neighbors in South Asheville. So I'm standing here tonight asking you to go ahead and plan in your retreat for the fiscal year two funding as well, because the South Asheville service needs to be happening. We're already behind with year one, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
My name is Jonathan Wayne Scott, and I guess by North Carolina state law, I live in District 2, Central Asheville. Just happy to see that the problem on Riverside Drive was attended to so quickly. I saw that there were some work trucks out there on Wednesday, the day after I came out here and told you about it. It looks like the problem has been remedied. I know it's probably a little bit provisional and temporary at the moment, but it was a pretty quick fix, and the water seemed to be coming from a creek that is, shows up on Asheville GIS hydrography map, very difficult word to say. And when I was looking at that, I also noticed the satellite imagery from there, and the problem was so bad that the Riverside Drive wet spot was showing up on Google Maps currently, and the Buncombe County GIS 2019 satellite imagery and Buncombe County 2010 GIS satellite imagery. So it's been a really persistent problem, seems like a pretty quick fix, and I'm glad that it got taken care of, and it seemed to hold up really well in the massive rain that we had just a few days after which closed Riverside Drive underneath the Festus Tresse, where we lowered the lowest point of the road in the flood plain, and now it floods a foot and a half sooner than it used to because we did that. That's what infrastructure is. I don't believe that infrastructure is a $100 million renovation to the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium. I know that's upcoming, might be a long process, but it's unconscionable to me that that qualifies as infrastructure. So those were kind of my two grounds. And also, I just wanted to iterate that, you know, with the Equity Inclusion Department's effort to get more African-Americans and minorities involved, and Boards and Commissions could be helped, especially with the Board of the Tourism Development Authority, which is predominantly white, to say the least, in its structure and its staffing and its board membership as well. So, you know, that would, you know, be improved by perhaps Keith Young or Shneke Smith serving on that board, so thanks, appreciate all of you doing here.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, we do not have a closed session. And our next council meeting will be, Maggie, on February, February 25th.